Order. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Cochran?
Here.
Mrs. Coons?
Here.
Ms. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Here.
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Ray?
Here.
Awesome. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. I'm looking first for a motion to accept the minutes from the November 7th, 2022 council meeting as presented and not read, please.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from November 7th, 2022 council meeting as presented and not read.
I'll second.
Thanks, Nikki. Thank you, Heather. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mrs. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Thank you. We're looking next for a motion to accept bills from November 5th, 2022 to November 18th, 2022 totaling $155,675.58 as presented and not read, please.
I'll make a motion to accept bills from November 5th, 2022 to November 18th, 2022 totaling $155,675.58 as presented and not read.
I'll second. Thanks, Laura. Thanks, John. Any discussion, council? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Thank you. We're looking next for a motion to accept the November 2022 DOPS delinquency report as presented and not read, please.
I'll make a motion to accept the November 2022 DOPS delinquency report as presented and not read.
I'll second.
Thanks, John. And Heather, thanks, Heather. Any discussion, council? Roll call, please.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
We are moving then into the reading of ordinances and resolutions.
Resolution number 7221-2022, a resolution accepting the resignation of Stephen Kagarik from the Lake More Police Department. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the village of Lake More County Summit and state of Ohio. Section 1, council regretfully accepts the resignation of Stephen Kagarik from the Lake More Police Department and thanks him for his service. Section 2, this resolution is declared to be an emergency measure in the interest of the health, peace, and safety of the citizens of the village of Lake More as each resignation is effective immediately, therefore this resolution should take effect immediately. Resolution number 7222-2022, a resolution accepting the resignation of Jason Franklin from the Lake More Police Department. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the village of Lake More County Summit and state of Ohio. Section 1, council regretfully accepts the resignation of Jason Franklin from the Lake More Police Department and thanks him for his service. Section 2, this resolution is declared to be an emergency measure in the interest of the health, peace, and safety of the citizens of the village of Lake More as each resignation is effective immediately, therefore this resolution shall take effect immediately. Resolution number 7223-2022, a resolution accepting the resignation of Garrett Fleming from the Lake More Police Department. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the village of Lake More County of Summit and state of Ohio. Section 1, council regretfully accepts the resignation of Garrett Fleming from the Lake More Police Department and thanks him for his service. Section 2, this resolution is declared to be an emergency measure in the interest of the health, peace, and safety of the citizens of the village of Lake More as each resignation is effective immediately, therefore this resolution should take effect on November 30th, 2022. Resolution number 7224-2022, a resolution approving the police chief to hire Zachary Troy as full-time police officer with the Lake More Police Department. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the village of Lake More County of Summit and state of Ohio. Section 1, council approves to hire Zachary Troy as a full-time police officer with the Lake More Police Department. Section 2, he will earn $21 per hour and will be provided health insurance after 60 days. Section 3, it is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the adoption of this ordinance were adopted in an open meeting of this council and that all such deliberations of this council and any of its committees that resulted in formal action were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements including section 121.22 of the Higher Advice Code. Section 4, this resolution is declared to be an emergency measure in the interest of the health, peace, and safety of the citizens of the village of Lake More therefore this resolution should take effect immediately. Resolution number 7225-2022, a resolution accepting the resignation of Austin Wingate as a part-time firefighter medic with the Lake More Fire Department. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the village of Lake More County of Summit and state of Ohio. Section 1, council regretfully accepts the resignation of Austin Wingate as part-time firefighter medic with the Lake More Fire Department and thanks him for his service. Section 2, this resolution is declared to be an emergency measure in the interest of the health, peace, and safety of the citizens of the village of Lake More, therefore this resolution should take effect immediately. Resolution number 7226-2022, a resolution accepting the resignation of David Banks as a full-time physician at the Lake More Department of Public Services. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the village of Lake More County of Summit and state of Ohio. Section 1, council regretfully accepts the resignation of David Banks as a full-time physician with the Lake More Police Department I'm sorry, Lake More Department of Public Services and thanks him for his service. Section 2, Mr. Banks will stay as a Class 1 water operator backup person for the village of Lake More. Section 3, it is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the passage of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of this council and that all deliberations of this council and any of its committees that resulted in such formal actions were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements including section 121.22 of the Higher Advice Code. Section 4, this resolution is declared to be an emergency measure in the interest of the health, peace, and safety of the citizens of the village of Lake More therefore this resolution should take effect on December 2nd, 2022. Ordinance number 1794-2022, an ordinance to amend, ordinance 1743-2021, make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the village of Lake More, state of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2022. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the village of Lake More County of Summit, state of Ohio. Section 1, council approves to increase appropriations in Street Construction and Maintenance Fund 2011, $10,000 for salaries for the remainder of the year. Emergency Medical Services Fund 2901, $300 for uniforms. Water Operating Fund 5101, $10,000 for salaries for the remainder of the year. Sewer Operating Fund 5201, $5,000 for salaries for the remainder of the year. Section 2, Treasury for payments for any of the foregoing appropriations. Upon receiving prop certificates and vouchers therefore approved by the board or officers authorized by law to approve the same or an ordinance or resolution of council to make the expenditures, provided that no warrant shall be drawn or paid for salaries or wages except to persons employed by authority of and in accordance with law or ordinance. It shall be provided further that the appropriations for contingencies can only be expended upon appeal of two-thirds vote of council for items of expense constituting a legal obligation against the village for purposes other than those covered by other specific appropriations herein made. Section 3, this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the village of Lake More, Ohio. Therefore this ordinance shall go into effect immediately.
On our agenda this evening, we're going to move into the mayor's report at the moment. First, I would like to remind everyone that the Lake More Food Pantry for the month of December, this will be our Christmas distribution. That will be held at Lake More United Methodist Church at 5:00 PM on Wednesday, the 21st of December, exactly a month from today. Any other updates for that?
It's just our food giveaway, so not necessarily Christmas.
Right, a regular, yeah, or December distribution, okay, yeah. So that will be happening again Wednesday, the 21st at 5:00 PM. And this week is Thanksgiving week, and I just wanted to take a moment to say thanks to so many people, especially our council and our staff, especially our two chiefs, Chief Smith, who's here, and Chief Reinboldt, and Tracy, our village administrator, and Megan, our fiscal officer, and all of our employees that work so hard to keep Lake More moving onward and upward. It's just been a blessing. I truly think this is one of the best councils we've ever had, in my opinion. Or maybe it's just because I'm partial and I'm lucky to be here with everybody, but Sam, Heather, John, and Ian, Laura, worked tirelessly with our staff, our safety services are top-notch. We're blessed to have you. Thanks for being here. We're sad to see some go, but maybe you'll come back someday. We could hope and pray, but we're blessed and lucky to have such loyal employees and good employees, quality, top-notch employees and top-notch councils. So I wanted to say thanks for that. It's something I'm very, very thankful for, and I don't say it enough. So thank you, guys. It's Thanksgiving week. I want to wish our families and our residents, you know, a blessed Thanksgiving holiday with family and friends and just good health and everything else that comes along with that. And that's all I have for the mayor's report. This is Cochran.
All right. Well, again, I also want to wish everybody out there a very blessed Thanksgiving. And especially, I'd like to give a shout out to your wife. I don't know how she does this with you. I mean, you, you, nothing bad.
You meant that in the conference?
I am to her. I mean, you give so much. You give so much to the village, and she has to put up with always being in second or third place, you know.
She's not.
Oh, I know, but, you know, in your school, the mayor, and all the other activities you do, so.
We're going to make two years married, God willing.
This month.
In two days.
In two days, right. So I, I, I just think about her, you know, and.
Thank you.
She's like, we just need to just point out his wife.
Yeah, point out that, you know, we need to thank her too for her effort in making this all work here, so. Having said that, our next council meeting will be December 5th and December 19th, and those will be at 7:00 PM. But starting then, December 5th, the council meetings will be, will not be held here. They will be at the high school in the community room, I believe, in the community room?
Yeah.
So, Rich, don't come here. We won't be here.
I said we're going to find it together. Saw each other at Farmer Boy today.
Okay, yeah, you follow me.
We're carpooling to the high school.
You can follow me from our driveway, and we'll figure it out together. And that's all, that's all I have to report.
Thanks, Laura.
Oh, well, I could do that, but I wasn't sure if you, you know.
No, I'm just going to talk about our event, but if you.
Okay, then I will mention that, well, two events then. I will mention, first of all, we're going to have Phila Cruiser.
Did I say Shop With A Cop?
Yeah, but we'll talk about them both. Okay, Phila Cruiser is going to start Friday. Oh, no, it's going to start Saturday, right, or Friday. Friday and Saturday. So that's going to be 9 to 6, 9 to 6 on this Friday, the day after, oh, Black Friday, the day after Thanksgiving. So Friday and Saturday from 9 to 6, you could go up to Dollar General. You can either make a cash donation, or you could go into the store and buy a toy and come out and donate it there. I think they even accept canned goods, but food, new clothes, blankets, whatever you want to give. But we hope that you go into the store and buy some of their stuff there and come on out and donate it or donate cash. All of that goes to Springfield Cares, and they in turn give it back to the community here, to those that need the extra special help. And then the other event will be held on December 10th, and that is going to be Shop With A Cop. And that is something that we just don't have that open for everybody, but names will be given to us. I haven't seen the names yet. But that will also be our, our police officers will be involved in taking some children from our community that has, that needs a little bit more assistance this year, and they will go to the Walmart and with gift cards, and they will have a Christmas list made out, and they will buy a little something for whoever is on their shopping list. So our police officers are going to be very busy this year.
I've never got to volunteer for that. I would love to do that this year.
Okay, then you're on my list.
Okay, write me down. I want to do Shop With A Cop.
For those that don't like actually do the shopping with the cops and the children, they also need like lots of wrappers.
We need gift wrappers.
I'm not a good wrapper. I mean, I can try. I'll stick my brains in it.
You should see the wrapping job.
Like Run DMC.
All right, now officially don't have anything else to talk about. Go ahead, Nikki.
All right. So we have a lot of stuff going on with the holidays coming up, Thanksgiving, Richard, also happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I hope everyone just gets to be home and enjoy their families because that's what I'm doing. I get to walk right next door to my mother-in-law's in my pajamas and do nothing, so I'm here for that. On Saturday, 5:00 PM on Saturday, the 26th, we are having our Lake More Tree Lighting. We do this every year. Last year, we did a little something different. Everyone really loved it. So if you were here last year and you're coming this year, we are bringing back the horse and carriage ride through the village, which everyone is super excited about. So the event starts at 5:00. Santa will be coming in on the fire truck at 5:30. And then we'll start the horse and carriage rides at 6:00. We'll have cookies and hot chocolate in this little room here. This will be the last Christmas we have in here with the old building. Yeah. Well, I mean, it'll be.
Maybe, delays and.
Right, anyway. So please come down and see us at 5 o'clock. We'll be, it'll be cold, so dress warm, and we'll have cookies and hot chocolate and Santa and horse carriage rides. It can't get better than that. So with that, I am done.
Thanks, Nikki. Ian, you're up.
Hi, I'd like to thank again Channel 1023. That's our local community channel that covers government meetings and events in Lake More and Springfield. Their schedule is on the SpringfieldTownship.us website, and it also runs on the channel itself. And right now, I believe they're running the Lake More Halloween Costume Contest along with various government meetings locally. And as always, if you have any suggestions for an event that would be nice to be covered, let one of your local government officials know, and we'll pass the word along to Channel 1023. And thanks again, guys.
Thanks, you. John, you're up.
Well, I'd just like to remind everybody, our next council workshop will be December 29th, December 14th, each at 6:00 PM. The one in November 29th will be the last one here. December 14th, we will start meeting up at the church, Lake More United Methodist Church in the community. End with that. That's all you.
All right. I just would like to say that it's the leaf-falling season is kind of coming to a close. So if you have some additional leaves clean up in your yard and things like that that you want to try to get before we fully go into winter, we just ask that you please do not rake it or blow it into the ditches or the waterways or the roadways because it does have a negative effect on our lake. So just kind of be mindful of that as you're finishing up your, your fall yard cleanup, so.
And on the same token as yard fall cleanup, now that we're like getting into colder temperatures, now this week it's been like bitter. Anybody that has like a sink or line that is close to the exterior wall, just make sure that you keep it on just a little bit. That way the pipes don't freeze, and then we don't have a huge mess. Also, like for washing your clothes and stuff, you want to do warm water, not just regular water, because the cold water will neutralize any of the soap on there. Same thing, winterize your spigot too, because that'll freeze as well. So just those like little reminders now that we're getting into the thick of the cold weather. So I know I have to do them at house, and they're annoying. So better than cleaning up a mess when something breaks, but.
Anything else, council? Quickly, I just wanted to give a shout out to G O's Give Back Tuesdays. The Lake More Lions Club is this month's beneficiary. So if you're hungry on a Tuesday, we'd very much appreciate your trip to G O's and spend lots of money because a portion of it will come to the Lake More Lions Club, which is another fantastic community service organization locally.
I have one more thing.
Yeah, go.
I want to welcome DeChecco's officially.
DeChecco's.
Have you tried, have you tried it? Have they, they haven't opened yet? It's going to be Black Friday, I think.
No, they said the 28th. I've been calling every day.
It looks so good. I know, I mean, we had, we just celebrated Cody's birthday, and we got all DeChecco's pizza. But I had to go to the acronyms. But like the Google thing said that they were open in like the, it was like last week.
Well, they pushed it back. They pushed it back.
They're getting so close, though. It looks so good. I cannot wait. It's exciting.
I know, and they were passing out $10 off coupons on, at the library. So my kids, I have like a stack of them. Each kid got one. I'm like.
Have more kids?
Right? We're having a pizza party. Just kidding.
Oh, Sam, thank you. Thanks.
Yeah, I can't wait to try it. Nobody wants to come to us tonight.
Thank you.
Rich, you don't want to come up?
Good.
Okay.
All right. We'll move on to new business. Laura, you have quite a few, and then John, so just go ahead and back to back if you would. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution number 7221-2022, a resolution accepting the resignation of Stephen Kagarik from the Lake More Police Department. But first, I'd like to make a motion to dispense with the three reads.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
And do I have a second on the original motion?
I'll second the original. Thank you.
Any discussion?
Hate to see him go.
No, hate to see him go, but we got a better opportunity.
Good for him. We'll miss him.
We would.
Hey, no further discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Like to make a motion to adopt Resolution number 7222-2022, a resolution accepting the resignation of Jason Franklin from the Lake More Police Department. But first, I'd like to make a motion to dispense with the three reads.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
And a second on the original? I'll second the original. Thank you.
Thanks, Nikki. Any discussion on that? Again, hate to see him go. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes. Next, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution number 7223-2022, a resolution accepting the resignation of Garrett Fleming from the Lake More Police Department. First, I'd like to make a motion to dispense with the three reads.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Nobody wanted a second of that. We were all like, hmm.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes, and we're excited for you. We're sad to see you go, but we're excited for you.
If you both know, that means you can't leave, right?
Right. No, no.
You got to say no, sorry.
Was there a second on the original?
I'll second the original. Thank you.
Okay, any discussion, guys?
Anything else?
We're going to miss you, buddy. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Regretfully, yes.
Ms. Anderson?
With a broken heart. Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
With regrets, absolutely, yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes, I guess. I'll let you get a good job.
Hear the violins playing in the background.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes, since we have to.
Okay, at least we're like, yeah, okay, bye.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution number 7224-2022, a resolution approving the police chief to hire Zachary Troy as full-time police officer with the Lake More Police Department. First, I'd like to make a motion to dispense with the three reads.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
I'll second the original.
Thank you.
Okay, any discussion?
I'd just like to say that this is one of the grants that we talked about, and we're lucky enough that we got this grant. And this is the three slash five-year grant that we, so we're very, very excited about this. And we're just, I just can't say how happy that we are to get this grant and to, to get Officer Troy to fill it for us, so.
Yeah. Okay.
Providing it passes here.
Well, now you have blood pressure on it for us. Could we?
Any, any discussion, any other?
We'll discuss that last part, I can take it.
All right. We'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Absolutely.
And lastly, I'd like to make the motion to adopt Resolution number 7225-2022, a resolution accepting the resignation of Austin Wingate as part-time firefighter medic with the Lake More Fire Department. But first, I'd like to make a motion to dispense with the three reads.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
I'll second the original.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
No, we just always hate to see any of our safety services leave us. There was a lot tonight, unfortunately.
I know.
Thank God we have a good promotion. Takes a little bit of the sting off.
Right, we ended it like, oh no.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
John?
All right, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution number 7226-2022, a resolution accepting the resignation of David Banks as full-time physician with the Lake More Department of Public Service. But first, I'd like to make a motion to dispense with the three reads.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
I'll second the original.
Thanks, Sam. Is there any discussion on that?
No, other than, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're good.
Oh, I just hate to see him go, and not that I want his new job to fail, but if it does, I, I hope he comes back. He's been here a long time, and we just hope he comes back.
That's a tough one, too.
Yeah, it's a tough loss for the village.
Yeah.
Good luck to him.
Right.
Absolutely.
Any other discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Hey, Ms. Anderson, talk some money now.
All right. I would like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 1794-2022. But first, I would like to make a motion to dispense with the three reads.
I'll second.
Thanks. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmanner?
Yes.
I'll second the original. Wait, did we dispense with it?
Yep.
Okay, I'll second the original. Testing you guys.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coontz?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmanner?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to dispense with the regular order of business.
I'll second.
For the purpose of?
For the purpose of swearing in Zachary Troy as full-time police officer with the Lake More Police Department.
Fantastic.
Yay!
All right, I need to go.
Roll call, roll call.
We got to do a roll call.
Before I stand. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coontz?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmanner?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Absolutely.
So excited.
Yeah, we always stand on the way because of pictures.
I guess we do, because we have pictures.
Really? Yeah.
Coffee smells good.
They probably both can, right? Do you object, chief?
Oh, Nikki, maybe Nikki can take a picture, except you.
Troy, yeah, they can give me.
Troy?
Don't make, yeah.
My dad's got it, he's good. Left hand or right hand? Left hand or right hand?
Right hand up left.
Man, I got a team of chis.
That's right. On this date, you are hereby commissioned to serve as a full-time police officer for the Village of Lake More Police Department pursuant to O R C Section 737.16. As such, you shall affirm the following. I, Zachary Q. Troy?
I, Zachary Quinn Troy?
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution and laws?
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States of America?
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws?
The Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Ohio?
State of Ohio.
And the laws and ordinances?
The laws and ordinances.
Of the Village of Lake More?
Of the Village of Lake More.
And will discharge the duties?
And discharge the duties.
Of the office of?
Of the office of.
Full-time police officer?
Full-time police officer.
With the Village of Lake More?
With the Village of Lake More.
Police Department?
With the Lake More Police Department.
To which I have?
To which I have.
Been appointed?
Been appointed.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my abilities.
That's, I just said that. Welcome aboard, full-time one. What a, what a blessing to be able to be listening.
Glad to be here for you guys.
Oh, I would take it on. We're thankful for you.
Thank you for the miss.
We're thankful for you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Very proud of you.
And Dad, where's Dad?
Is it 22nd? Is it 22nd?
I see, I see pressure over my radio. It's so loud, it sucks my ring out. I'm still not yet, though. I promise. I feel like such a parent about it, too. Afterwards, you want to. Mine is.
I'm so happy. I'm so glad you're trying happy.
I just want to make sure, because I'm going to call one.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Tell me where.
Right here.
Yes, sir. Anything for you, chief.
Thank you.
Tell me where.
Congratulations, happy for you.
Okay, we're good.
Don't worry, I didn't forget you guys. That's all.
Congratulations.
Officer Troy, it's a blessing, truly.
Hey, you know what? You should see your mom's face the whole time. That's what I was looking at, your mom's face. She's just, like, smiling at you, so proud.
Of course she has. She's got it all up there.
Not right now.
Sure she does.
We're not budging.
She's got it.
What?
She's got it all up here. She doesn't need anything.
Okay, well, because you'll, you know why.
Yes.
It's like, I want more pictures of you, son.
Of course.
So at this time, I'm going to make a motion to return to the regular order of business.
I'll second.
Thank you. Thanks, Laura. Thanks, Heather. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Coontz?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmanner?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coontz?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coontz?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Coontz?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coontz?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coontz?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 7226-2022, a resolution accepting the resignation of David Banks as full-time physician with the Lake More Department of Public Service. But first, I'd like to make a motion to dispense with the three reads.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmanner?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coontz?
Yes.
I'll second the original.
Thanks, Sam. Is there any discussion on that?
No, other than, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're good.
Oh, I just hate to see him go, and not that I want his new job to fail, but if it does, I hope he comes back. He's been here a long time, and we just hope he comes back.
More than 10 years of time. When you have your part-time.
That's a tough one, too.
Yeah, it's a tough loss for the village.
Yeah.
Well, good luck to him.
Right.
Absolutely.
Any other discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Stripmanner?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coontz?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coontz?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coontz?
Yes.
We're, we're like, it's a hard question.
I know, I'm just.